Nine o'clock, I'll tell this meeting order. Here, here. Please stand and pledge.
I am the President, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on my nation, under God, invincible, with every team and justice brought.
Item three, discussion of possible approval of amendment from December ninth, twenty twenty four, Commissioner's hearing. Morning Charles. All second. Yes.
Upstanding.
Eric?
Yes.
Item four, discussion of possible action on Chris Dagg and Sasson Mav...
Mavado.
Addressing the Board of County Commissioners in reference to Chisholm Trail property tax disvaluation. Step forward.
Good morning, Commissioner. With discussion discrepancies in tax allocation that the county has imposed on our property to Chisholm Trail. And we question that in regard to what public state law allows that the county assessor to apply. Plus, we found out that county assessor did not have, or was not aware of, and then there are number two of these, which expired January of twenty twenty. Having said that, we just met with her last Thursday, I believe, and would like to ask a consideration of if we got to pay the taxes on the property and path. But we feel like that there needs to be some adjustments moved before. There's also... What else was in those two there?
Property tax adjustment and how they just be evaluated.
Oh, right, well, and also the division of those taxes for the TIF funds by the county or allocation of the TIF between us and just to look forward. We question that because it is not in compliance with the TIF agreement, that was, that expired. So there's two different, there's valuation and there's allocation.
We're asking for your all's help in moving this forward and trying to get this done because it's just come to our knowledge of how it's been done. And I actually brought a copy of amendment number two, that was signed, give you each one.
Okay. Well, this is not the board that you need to be in on. The board you need to be on is in the Tax Patrol Correction Board, which meets on the first Tuesday of the month. And Chairman Zach Davis is the chairman of that Tax Correction Board. So there's absolutely nothing we can do to help you out.
They're not meeting again until January?
Probably correct. And that's where you need to bring your complaints and your concerns.
Yeah, who receives mail for the board deposition?
Clerk Fosse.
Did you get my letter?
I did get your letter.
All right.
And they also have a copy of that letter. Can you tell the board what taxes these are though?
What did you know?
No, what year?
Oh. We can go back to twenty fifteen when we purchased the property. Because amendment number two clearly states on page four of where the base name value has to be at forty seven thousand dollars. And for some reason, it has ballooned out to some properties that are two point two million, one million in their assessment value.
And he's correct that that would all be brought to the disposition room, but if the time limit is done, we can't go any further.
We're not asking. We're not asking for your permission.
So for the twenty twenty five taxes?
Twenty twenty four taxes is what I'm going to do, we're focused on testing that.
But that's still also done.
Any of you guys want to discuss this with the assessor?
Yes, sir. Actually, that's when we...
What was her reply?
She was going to dig into all of this, obviously, because she didn't have this amendment number two.
Okay. She serves on that board too, it's made up of three members. One from the excise, the chairman of the commissioners and the assessors, so that's where you need to bring it to.
Okay, but that's for valuation. What about the...
That's for actual correction of your taxes.
Correction is the division of that for the TIF recipients.
Basically, anything with your taxes, it has to go through that board or the assessor.
Kirk, the TIF money is already gone to the city of Chickasha, there is no money sitting at the county. That is all gone, that is all gone.
Yeah, we're... But if it was divided by the state, that's what we're talking about.
Well, Chairman Zach Davis will be there for that meeting, so that's where you need to bring it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Item five, discussion of possible action on reports from the emergency management director, Greg James, fire department, taking director of discretion to print agenda. Dale?
We don't really have a whole lot going on. We're just in the midst of waiting on city inspections and everything for the office over there to get back and forth. Just an FYI, since we've been down, passport office has been closed. Laura did a count and we get six hundred and thirty eight passports. Four hundred and something is moved and the other hundred and something was renewed, but a total, we had six hundred and thirty eight passports issued through our offices since January one. So, and as soon as we opened back up around the first of January or something in that time frame, we've already got a point set, so we're...
Say the total again for this for the year, right?
Yeah, six hundred and thirty eight total. That includes new passports and renewals.
Okay. So. What was the year before, did you know?
No, but I can get you the...
Is that, do you think that's up or down?
It is a... I'm more to say five hundred and forty eight to...
And when did we move that over there to that office from a court clerk's office? What year do you remember? Was it before COVID?
Yes, because we were still over in the west end of the building.
It was eighteen, nineteen, I guess.
Because I think we moved to the other end of the building in nineteen. And naturally, we started having, of course, COVID and all that stuff, pretty close to making that.
Thank you, Dale. Kim?
We have our board meeting tomorrow night at seven, here's the agenda. On the email that Stormy sent, the agenda, she says a high probability she will not be there because of her work hours this time of year. So we may already not have a warrant, I'll figure it out, let you know ahead of time on that. We're starting our countywide training again, the first training is on January nineteenth at the Farwell Station. And they'll start over in January with their curriculum for the new firefighters.
Isn't this the month that she's up or renewal?
And I am going on vacation next week and didn't know if she'd be on that agenda for the twenty third or if we need to wait till the first weekend and first meeting in January. I don't know. She won't fully be out of term until the end of December. So possibly the first Monday of January would be.
So, we're considering action.
Until her term's out.
The month after her term expires.
Yeah, just think about it. That was I'd like to position.
Yeah. Well, I will deal with that when I get back to vacation and sort of get an other permission.
I wonder what you saw.
Okay. She didn't say she wouldn't be there, it shows a high probability that she would not be there.
So this is a pretty short agenda.
Yeah, it is, new firefighters, financials. Or the updates, about it.
I bet it's a long one though, I don't know if you looked at the one last agenda items.
So are you contacting all the board members? I mean...
I have been. I hear back from quite a few of them.
Yeah.
What's the final item?
Tell them me to have a warrant there.
I looked at it, I like it so ten.
Item ten?
Ten. Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was doing my first thing.
There needs to be a warrant.
Okay.
And usually, if... Warrant's not there, there's four not there.
I will, I'll start contacting them today instead, I usually do on Tuesday morning, but I'll get out there a little bit quicker to be sure that everybody understands. Now Danny told me a couple of weeks ago that he was having knee surgery in December, not weeks, months, a couple of months ago, but I haven't, he didn't mention it to me last month, so.
Um, I might do it later.
Okay, I figured he would.
Okay. So with item ten, what do you hope to accomplish with item ten?
I don't know, I did not...
Because I can't be there.
I didn't put that on the...
He's a representative, so.
One of our board members did.
Yeah, they're wanting to disband the board. They don't have authority to do it. Who does? They can bring the recommendation to this board, but by the question of the vote, I don't think, there has to be a board established. So they need to understand that. If you read the question on what the people voted on... So you have to be careful with that. That's putting my lawyer hat on there, Charles. Which doesn't fit very well.
I think it brings up a lot of questions.
Anyway, have that in mind, so. All right.
Bobby?
Pretty short week, we had three reported injuries last week. And then I'll be conducting our regular monthly facility walkthrough, fire extinguisher, fuel leak tank inspection with throughout the county. And then I'll be off next week, Christmas break.
Thank you, Bobby. Mike?
They got all the old casts tore out from emergency management. There was a problem in the wire, the two toilets came together, that was what was causing our issue, but the whole trunk was rotted at the bottom, so it's probably good that we did this. The inspector's supposed to be out today, we're cool, we can start, give us okay, so we can cover everything back up and continue on. And then they're coming tomorrow with the handrails on the site of emergency management, so we can finish that. And then supposed to do the sheriff's evidence warehouse replacement, those panels and skylights start next week, depending on how the weather holds. But emergency management thing is a little longer, I think, than what, a little more than what they bargained for.
Looks like.
It's a nightmare with it.
Missed miss.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Item six, public comments, nobody signed in.
Okay, Bobby.
Hope you see how it gone, you Bobby already in.
I have anyone?
I have a question for him.
Okay.
I don't know how I missed you, but the handicap spot there that had been taken away from the election board on the end.
On the north end?
Yes. Why is that?
Uh...
It needs to be back there.
Okay. When we put that drainage walkway, we moved, we, I think I brought it before you guys, it might be in a minute, so I have to go back and look. But we moved, we, I asked if we could move and have another spot on the south side of that election board and you guys agreed on it. So we moved it from that side to be, from the north side to the south side because of that drainage that was going to be there, that walkway.
Well, you've got an employee parking there now and we've got handicap people that need to be parking there, close to it, so either mark it in some way, I mean...
What you do?
Where the boys are not parking there and where handicap people can when they come to.
Okay.
Where you spotted it.
It's that first spot.
I don't remember us talking about it and I thought we agreed to move it, but I mean, it's been...
Well, the employees are marking there and we got so many senior citizens that come in there, they need to have a place instead of parking all the way down to the other end across the street.
Before they, before they put a lip on there, before they did that asphalt, there was quite a bit of lip. It, it was still that, that whole side right there where that water comes from the north. It pretty much wasn't, it wasn't going to be able to be a handicap because that's pretty much a drainage, it's not anything that somebody can go use it as a ramp.
But nobody needs to be parking there.
Well, they can now from this side, on the left side, they can go up the steps and then...
Well, look at it again.
Yes, sir.
That needs to be...
Yes, sir.
More.
Okay, item six, public comments, nobody signed in, item seven, new business. And the only thing I got is, we'll probably put it on, I mean, we will have to put it on the agenda this week or the next week, but you guys think about canceling the meeting for the twenty third. I don't think there's going to be much on the, on the agenda for the twenty third.
Yeah, I think that's nice.
So we'd have to do it today then. It's up to you, I don't care, one way or the other.
If you didn't make me... How's that company, we're paying and signing for payment.
Then it matter to me, I'm just bringing it up for you.
I think we need to have it.
We're probably getting a design. Oh, you know what?
Oh. Nevermind, I got nothing.
I got nothing.
Item eight, discussion of possible approval of following draw address from the Gray Memorial Hospital sales tax accounts held with First National Bank. Teleflex LLC surgical instrument contractor, thirty five hundred bucks, fusion sign and design outdoor limited signs, twenty three thousand, three hundred and seventy dol... Three hundred and seventy two dollars and thirty eight cents.
Fairly self-explanatory, get the retractors, already probably seen enough TV shows. And then the signs, just because they were old signs that we had up front, they were all faded and old, so we just had to replace them, so that's what those two items are.
Have those signs been quoted and bid with...
All of our things over five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, this was, but this has been a long time in progress because all of these supply chains.
That's quite a bit of money, it's the signage.
Well, there's three signs. Big one, the big two, just a one by D R outside.
I'll make a motion to your board. Say it. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Next item is just, I wanted you guys to be aware of it, it may be an opportunity to county, maybe county attorney as well.
Oh, Latin, Latin area.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Item nine, discussion on the update of Gray Memorial Hospital roof replacement.
As I mentioned, this might be very useful to the county for other purposes because we're a, we're a governmental entity, so we were able to take advantage of the thing called TOPS. Rewind you, about eighteen months ago, we had that hailstorm that took out the high school's entire roof. We had our insurance company come out, looked at the proposal and look at our roof and they effectively said, well, we need to repair the damage and it was a new thing like a whole roof replacement. Our engineers thought, no, there's a lot more damage, how can you have a hailstorm just a few, have a block away, tear out the entire roof and then ours is just a few replacements. So they basically made a proposal to pay us about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to repair the damage and let us stay back to home. Well, we basically hired an engineer, it took a whole year and a half, so I wanted to get that updated. And our engineer came out to Tulsa and he basically did an analysis, a four, three hundred and twelve page analysis that said, no, our roof needs to be replaced, but you can't repair the kind of damage you've got. You don't need to be relevant, all that, other than the fact that we took a long time as we had to hire a separate engineer to get the roof replaced. And we had received a check about three, four months ago for one point six million dollars to replace four of our roofs. So basically, we were in a dispute with our insurance company, okay? How this all turns out is that I understood, we as a hospital, and I think that they have similar type of things, but we use group purchasing for a lot of our functions. Where we use the buying power of a network of hospitals to get things cheaper. Well, this TOPS program, and I have copies for you guys to pass along or to consider. The TOPS program was created by all of the school districts in the state. State schools around the country, around our state, we had hail all the time. So they created this program about eight years ago, where all the schools super tents would get together and once a year, they would bid roof replacement with materials and the vendors across the state by region. So that they could have in advance bids that were acceptable to the state, so that if they ever had a roof damage, they could get immediately to get the roof fixed. Instead of going for the bid and all that kind of stuff, because roofs are expensive to fix, no. So they created this thing called TOPS, it's a membership model. We join TOPS because we're a government instrumentality and it's a free membership, but what it allowed us to do is that we were able to get our bids out. And we could get quotes on that almost within about thirty days, and so that's what you have in front of you. Why I wanted you guys to be aware of it is because it would have, if we would have had a leaking roof, now granted, this was back in nineteen, this was a year and a half ago. We patched these roofs so they could hold water, but they were always leaking a little bit. You know how roofs are, if you don't have them totally fixed. So it just, it saved us a tremendous amount of time and money getting these, this TOPS program. And I just thought for all of the county roofs you guys have or any governmental entity, including Chickasha School, City, any governmental entity can do this, it just speeds things up. And I know that when I have a roof to fix, you have to fix it, it's not like you have time, so I just thought you guys should know about it. It took us three months of our attorney's time to make sure that this was appropriate for a public trust. Just if you guys thought this might be something you could look into in advance, you may not need it for years, but if you have it, then you know about it and it may save the county time in a lot of manner. So that's the whole reason for you to put this on the agenda, you know, one and a half million dollar roof, I kind of imagine knowing, you know, I think it was good for us that we kind of fought the insurance company on this issue. Because of the way I do, I had a hundred and sixty thousand dollar repair, now we get four new roofs, bad for them, good for me, you know, it's just one of those things that we thought that they were kind of cheaping out on us. And sometimes that happens. Companies that you hire, they want to get off as cheap as they can, and I did have to pay some money for a consultant, but his study was so detailed that they couldn't argue and that's why they didn't have to pay him. We didn't go for, we didn't do any of that, but we, we had the argument and they didn't want to do that, so they just wrote another check for one and a half million dollars. Any questions, I just thought it'd be useful to share that with this group because you never know, you know, roofs, we have membrane roofs and, you know, so membrane roofs are the kind of gender used. And so that's just going to go on this, I would have been putting that on probably in December, January, so I was real happy how it turned out for the hospital.
All right. Thank you, King. Item ten, discussion of possible action on request from Gray Memorial Hospital for county assistance with funding and physician recruitment and retention of a woman's primary care physician in the amount of a hundred and twenty five thousand, nine hundred and seventy five dollars.
Yeah, I wrote a nice letter to you guys and, you know, we just needed a little help on this, this particular one, the clerk's and she's a female physician that's finishing up at the Talacoa Indian Medical School in Oklahoma. Her husband lives in Lindsay and we're competing against at least one other hospital to try to get her in this community. We think that we have a good shot of getting her. Right now, we don't have, our cash is relatively low, so we don't have the cash position to guarantee her the kind of money that we're asking the county. So what we were asking for was your support, because we already have an offer for another male physician that might be joining us too. But we need another woman because the only female family medicine doctor in our hospital is Dr. Abby Hopst. And the women of our community can't get in to see her because her waiting list is six months old. You have to wait six months, unless you're a consistent patient. So we just need your help on it, it's the signing, that's how doctors are recruited nowadays, they have to sign. So we have a three year commitment from her, she comes, this is contingent, we don't have a signed contract, I anticipated she would agree. So we're still trying to sweeten the pot, shall we say, to get her to come here instead of somewhere else. One quarter of her current salary is what happens when we bring a new doctor in, Kurt knows this, but the rest of you guys don't. You bring a new doctor in, they can't bill until the physicians, insurance companies, all these insurance companies take usually between three to six months to approve them on their plan. So the employer eats all of those charges until they're approved, unless it's a self pay cap, which is no pay anyway, most people that are self paid can't afford it. So it's one, three months of her pay and her malpractice and then the sign on bonus, if you might consider helping us because we don't have the funds to do both doctors. And that's assuming she comes, if she doesn't come, we'll pass the county in, we won't care. So that's the pitch.
Well, I want to be honest with the way, this is just my opinion on it, I don't think that this is, since the county is a hospital of trust, I don't think it's the board of county commissioners issue to do recruitment for the hospital. It's just my opinion, it's how I feel. The hospital since two thousand, I went back five years, in use tax, the hospital's got three million, one hundred and forty two thousand, five hundred and fifty six dollars and ninety six cents. Sales tax was a little bit further than that and it was nine million, two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight dollars and thirty eight cents. From the general fund, the hospital's got seven hundred and four thousand, one hundred and forty one dollars. And from ARPAs, three, three million, four hundred and eighty, three, three million, four hundred and eighty thousand, forty six dollars and sixty six cents. So I just don't feel like that's the county's responsibility and recruiting staff, because where does that end, you know, the jail is also a trust. Does the jail come in here and ask for, for money to recruit somebody for them, the fair board, I just don't feel like that's, that's the county's ones.
Well, I wish I could convince you, but I understand exactly, the county's been very generous with it. The sales and use tax is something in which the voters passed, so that wasn't anything...
I agree, I understand that.
Appreciate it. And without that, we would have had the hospital out.
We cannot use the sales tax in that manner.
No.
So.
The sales tax was earmarked for the building and all of the debt service on that building, it's for fiscal assets only.
I understand.
Specifically says no salaries on sales tax. The other issue is just, it's an economic development for the county, I totally get it, but every doctor that I recruit generates to the county about a million dollars in revenue and it just serves the people. So I get it, it's not the way it was in nineteen fifty eight when we did the lease, where hospitals, if you rent them well, are profitable. In my mind, we're all hospitals, seventy one percent of the hospitals that stayed are in red, if we don't have some summer support without, without the sales tax, we'd be a big problem. So yeah, I get you, it's just that that's simple, the communities that are struggling to keep their hospitals have done all sorts of taxes and...
So there is one avenue you can take. If, how much ARPA money do we have left?
I can tell you at least...
Hundred thousand, eighty thousand?
I don't think it's that much.
Yeah.
If you fill out an application and apply for it to bring in a physician, a woman physician for the county, you can apply to, and then because there are attorneys and then it comes to this board and then you approve it or not approve it, correct?
Yes, if it's...
I didn't know there was any ARPA left.
Well...
It's from, it's from what's...
Let's see.
What's the deadline on that?
I thought that was today.
I think it's today. I think it's today.
How about the interest? We've already taken... We've already taken the interest. Have you spent that? We, we divided it, we, between the three districts on the interest.
Soup kitchens was on the agenda today.
Well, before, when all this started, it was twenty twenty-six. We had to use it by the federal government. We had to use it up. Have they changed that?
I think they've changed it because I know for that firehider and stuff, they had, it had to be, it had to be invoiced.
It has to be used. It has to be encountered.
Okay, every other county of, of my counties. And I'm thinking today is the.
I think it's today.
Today is the.
Well, it was the date y'all said that everything had to be paid, isn't it?
Yeah, I remember that.
And then next week you're, you'll decide on where it's gonna, the rest of it's gonna go when we get all the totals back in.
If it's just not general fund, unless you change the date till next week, I could get an ARPA application to you by next week?
I don't think it's us. It's the federal government.
No, you set the date on what we would have, if everything was paid today, what we would have left. And then next week you would decide if there's anything left you want to do with it.
I don't think we could change that. It was on the agenda. We changed that.
No, but what I'm saying is he, he could send an ARPA request and next week you would decide if that amount of money was to go to him or not.
Because we set the twenty-third for our decision, right?
Decision of where it's gonna go, the rest of it.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Now, we don't have that much. I don't think it's that much, but there was a little bit coming back.
But you'd have to be specific on how much you want help, not just, well, let's figure here, you've got a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, that's the cost that we have, but.
You need to ask how much and then we'll tell you how much we can do.
Yeah, there won't be anything close to that, but.
Probably up to.
But.
I'm gonna say maybe, just guessing, ten thousand?
Oh, sorry.
It's not, it's not too much.
I think it's probably like ninety-eight hundred is what I kind of think it is.
I'm throwing in the wrong.
After we take today's out of there, what we're looking at today? All right.
All right. No action. Item eleven, discussion of possible approval of planned maintenance agreement between Clifford Power Systems and Grady County Emergency Management.
This is our yearly, yearly contract with Clifford. And the only thing that we're doing different, the base deal was eight hundred and fourteen dollars for our yearly service. But the only thing that we're going to do different is we're going to do a two-hour load bank test for the whole building. We were gonna do that two years ago, but when we scheduled them to come out, Katrina had an election going on. And we didn't want to do anything while the election was going on. So total's thirteen, thirteen something. But the total is eight hundred and fourteen dollars for the annual service fee and six hundred and nineteen dollars for the two-hour load bank test.
I'll make a motion to approve. Yes.
Yes.
I'll sign this. Bill will sign this.
Uh, you can go ahead and sign.
All right. Item twelve, discussion of possible approval of quote from AED Superstore for two AED machines in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. After last week's events, we kind of, me and the sheriff talked about putting a, buying an AED to put down here and then one maybe in the break room since it's two of them. We can discuss where to put them after, but it was kind of thought it might be a good idea to have something down here to put meetings.
Where to put them in this year, that's up to you.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. I think it's a good thing. Yes.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
I talked to Bill Zach and we went, we went, tried to put a class together for, for this, just to be able to get a, a training. Like I said, it's up to you where you want it. We purchased two. We put another one on there just to have one here and one maybe in the, in the second floor and the fourth courts, along with the first aid kit, which those were like thirty-eight dollars.
And we can either set up the training as a monthly, say, I've got a good YouTube video specifically for his AED that they could either watch as a group or individually or something like that. Where I'm still looking for some handouts. They're kind of hard to find, you know, for specifics. But AED is very, very user-friendly. I mean, you can have somebody that's never, don't, don't even know what it is. As soon as they open up, the phone will tell you exactly what it is. But that YouTube video for Phillips AED is really a good thing. It's only just a short, short video that we could either have them do at their desk or, or however y'all want to do it.
So we can have like certain people take, take this training and.
Okay, can we, hold up a second. Who's that lady that was here? She's just doing, that has to be shut off. By law, cannot be recorded. Has to be shut off.
Put someone to grab her and tell her you can get in here and get that thing out. Okay, did you shut that off then?
It's not finished yet. I mean, they will have it completed. And so we talked to Ford Driver and this is what this is if you want to amend it. They've got the concrete. I think they just don't have the, the roof part on the concrete.
So this is just an extension, time extension?
Yes.
Top for how long?
Well, I mean, you, we've encountered the monies. But they did ask for a specific amount where some of them were not specific and money would come back. This money will not come back because this is exactly what they were paying.
Now, what's force of motion?
To extend it.
To extend it. Zach?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Item fourteen, discussion of possible action on the table item for distribution of the residual funds of the trust estate of Grady County Home Finance Authority in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and four dollars and seventy-eight cents of the Grady County Commissioners.
If you want to, if you wish to.
Is this taking all our funds?
I think they're just.
Insolving?
Yes.
So this is all the funds they have there. Can you go back to general?
Okay.
Because it won't be, it won't be, have to be in a certain account for anybody to spend it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say. Yes.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Item fifteen, discussion, action on upgrading storm sirens software in Pioneer area. Current sirens located in Norge Pioneer Fire Station and Laverty Church.
I have the quote here. This is Clay Elrod. He's our chief at the Pioneer Station. I have the quote here on the upgrade with that. He received from Goddard Enterprises because all of our storm siren went or a lot of it.
So basically, right now, for those sirens to be set off, somebody has to physically drive to the firehouse. The old radios that we use, or that we don't use anymore is another way we can set them off. The new radios don't have the capability of setting them off. So somebody has to, in the middle of the night, get up, drive to the firehouse, set them off. The person's usually me, if I'm awake, you know, get up, get dressed, drive four miles and set them off. And usually by then it's too late. This new software could let us set parameters established by the National Weather Service. And once we meet those parameters, they'll automatically go off, set them off. It's internet-driven. There's an app for it where we can set them off. We're just getting away from that antiquated technology and, you know, trying to get the current. I believe Nanacaw is going to the system. I know Ascena in Caddo County is going to this system, Shurul as well. So it's, it's coming down the back.
So you're needing the funds?
Yes, sir. If we can get you to cover this, that, you know, pays up money for us to, you know, make repairs and do our, our normal thing.
Was it tax money that, that the fire departments were getting or that worked?
I mean, you know, we can use it for that. My guys wanted me to bring it to y'all and present it to y'all to see if y'all would cover it. I talked to the town of Norge. I had Norge agree to pay half of it, half of the software. That leaves the petite six hundred dollars left for, for us to pay. And we can do it, but they wanted me to bring it to y'all to see if y'all would cover it.
So this would cover the town of Norge, Pioneer School, Pioneer Community?
Yeah, and Laverty.
Where would this be placed at?
It'll be, it's basically a plug and play to what we've already got on the tower.
And where's that located?
It's relatively close to our firehouses on the hill next to our firehouse.
And you and another one can set it off with your phone?
Yes. If we had a special event to where we don't have parameters set but need to set it off, we can pull out our phone, set off the sirens, you know.
So even our emergency management and, or security director could set it off?
Yes. Yeah, they, they would have the capabilities. I mean, all we'd have to do is give them permission to, you know, access that.
Right. We have that T, we have that account that we fund, the TFR camp?
Yeah, District Pullman. The TRD.
I wouldn't mind putting in money in that to.
I wouldn't mind. I wouldn't mind either.
It really ought to come out of District Three's money.
No.
Well, I told them first because that's District Three.
The, the only, the only thing that I, about.
The money of three districts. Okay, listen, go ahead, Zach. I'm sorry.
The only problem I have with is I don't know how I could explain my citizens when I were putting money in for something that ain't gonna benefit anybody in District Four. That's my only thing about funding it out of that. I don't have, I don't have a problem with explaining it, but how do I explain?
I don't. It's thirty-something thousand. I get that when I get my preparation ledgers.
We already have thirty-some thousand in it? At the town of Norge, I'm fine with doing half. They'll do half, you know.
Well, I've already got the town to agree to have.
Maybe, maybe your station ought to put up the other half, part of the other half, and we put up the rest of it. I mean, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
Everybody needs to, that is gonna serve, needs to put in a portion, I think. So.
Well, I mean, if we don't do it, we'll be the guys doing the cleanup afterwards, searching and recovery. I mean, we'll, we'll be there regardless of it or not.
He's had Harold. I got Harold.
What does Harold do?
I don't think Harold got. Yeah, they're, I think Close and South, they're like a mile. Yeah, they're just up.
Tom has spoke on that. The M and O account has thirty-eight hundred and Capital Outlet has twenty-four thousand of the R, TRD account, the fifty-three hundred.
Really, it'd help with all twelve fire stations to put this in.
It would.
And other than Harold, the municipality of Minco needs to, if, if they don't have it, need to upgrade too. It's where your people, the majority of your people live. And Harold's not one of those stations that would benefit out of that.
Well, I mean, nothing else. This takes the monkey off my back because I'm the one setting them off right now. I've been on vacation and sat and watched, you know, my phone watching the weather. And then when I think we're getting close to having something, I have to start calling each one of my firefighters, see who's around so they can run to the firehouse and stuff.
That's not a good system.
It's not.
Response time is. So we're talking about possibly doing all of the fire stations? Well, right now, we.
Well, I've got the pump for just my run area.
I know our discussion's going that way. So if we do one, are we gonna do them all? I would like to see it go to that way, but I realize you have eight, I have three and District One has one, but I think that would be.
And Nanacaw and Elic are already outfitted with.
Who?
Nanacaw and Elic are already.
So there it takes you down to six.
Well, this is gonna be one of those deals where they're gonna have to come out and inspect what you've already gone and see what you need to add to. So I'm in the quotes you're gonna be.
I think we're, I think we're going from a ten or eleven thousand dollar discussion to about a several six-figure.
Right now, we need to decide if we're gonna help him, right?
Correct.
I mean, the storms we've had here lately are happening in the middle of the night instead of, you know, run around Dart or, or in the afternoon.
Well, you got a school there.
We do.
You got children.
Is that a, is this a state contract? I didn't see a state contract number on that. Is that a state contractor deal?
No, I think just because we got one out. It was just.
Telecommunications does, so I don't know that it has to be bid since it's a tele, since it's a kind of a communication situation.
Well, it says. But it was divided by Norge.
They, they keep coming down and it sounds like they're forming that every station is gonna want eventually.
Yeah, I'm not sure. When I read Dale was here, because he could, I mean, I know where they are, but I'm not sure where they aren't. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So you said the, one of the halves is fifty-six, six thousand, the same?
Yeah, it's half of the eleven thousand, one hundred, whatever it was. So looking at roughly fifty-six hundred a half.
So if that station, Pioneer, would put up three thousand, Norge would put up fifty-six hundred a half. Are y'all willing to have the, oh, the TFR that's got thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight hundred and then Capital Outlet has twenty-four thousand.
Okay. So.
I mean, keep in mind, Norge is doing the maintenance on these things and keeping them up and going, so.
Couldn't I use some of that ARPA money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know there's, I know there's ninety-eight hundred bucks in there. I feel like I gotta turn back ninety-eight hundred bucks.
Since money came back from the fire departments.
Yeah.
That ARPA money.
How near for that, eleven thousand? Well, your initial award was seventy-eight. You picked up sixty-seven.
Somebody would have to write that up and send it again. Well, it's deadline for them to, so all the money is supposed to have been, went out now and it's all done, except for the one that they extended. And so I don't know how much came back for sure, but now next week they can decide if they want to give it to someone else.
Is that on the agenda?
Yes, it's on the agenda for next week to do that. But they could go ahead and send it into Ford Driver and then.
I was gonna say you'd have to get Ford Driver to.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey.
Just before.
It's worth a, it's worth a try.
Yeah. We paid them three hundred and some thousand to do this.
Because the thirty of you can still do it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, just take a phone call.
I think it's worth trying.
So I need to get some submitted for the difference of the fifty-six hundred that Norge and Pioneer.
Just look at first, trying to get the ARPA money to cover.
Find out how much is in there and if there's enough in there, get covered, the whole thing.
Yeah, that wouldn't allow Norge to buy something else for RE and RTR. I mean, they're, they're wanting to help out, you know, where they can and if.
City council, they have a council?
Yeah, they have a council. They did a switch hands, knocking up.
Do you know what they need?
Uh, at Norge City, City Ball.
I mean, if they're still willing to do that, it's gonna benefit their community. They need to put it in.
Right.
I mean, so.
You've got to spend the money. This money somewhere goes. So you have to make a decision on that.
I mean, the November meeting that I attended, I got them to commit to half. I mean, the November meeting that I attended, I got them to commit to have, so they're recommending.
Okay. Let's try to get the ARPA money on the other half then. Let's take no one.
Huh?
I said, I mean, that one is big.
Yeah.
Let's take no action. That way we rewrite the agenda. I don't want you to rewrite the agenda.
Think, Clay.
Well, the, the agenda, as it's written, still has to be rewritten to get it into the ARPA language. So it has to be a new agenda.
Right. Let's, no action, so we can rewrite the agenda. Okay, item sixteen, discussion of possible approval of tabled item for request from the city of Chickasha for the overlay of Cotton Road thirteen ninety east of railroad tracks to Senior Road for reimbursement of the total cost from the city of Chickasha to the county. Reverend, under our local agreement, signed on April twenty-second, twenty-four, twenty-four, and amended May sixth, twenty-two.
Charles?
I've been waiting to get proof. I still don't have it. I must counsel this board to take no action on this, but they have not yet.
Proof of what?
Their commitment, yeah. They were, they, they, they still not voted on.
They're gonna get it tonight.
Maybe, but I don't have it.
But on other projects, I understand where you're coming from, but other projects, they paid us, me, basically, over four hundred and some thousand. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And that prior action would suggest that this is not going to be approved, however, it's not, I, I, Amanda Moen is the city attorney. She is, and she has not gotten to me.
I move to table it till next week.
Give a second of that. Yeah, I think we're supposed to table it, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Item seventeen, discussion of possible approval of interlocal agreement for the sale of equipment for District One to Cowal County in the amount of ninety thousand dollars. Uh, this is on a cap backhoe that we had extra, and I'll make a motion for it.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you. Zach?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Zach, would you tell me a little bit about this and all of this?
Um, so, yeah, we, we advertised this, this backhoe and a couple of the packers on, as a, through ACO. ACO sent it out on email blast, and, uh, we've done it before with the full county on some equipment, and, uh, it just helps other counties, and they don't have to go through the big process, and, and, uh, we can do a direct sale to them through, uh, through, through this.
But didn't we find out that we're actually supposed to be doing an interlocal agreement with these?
I, we just did this, um, this is the first year of local agreement that we did, but we've never done one before, but I, I don't know if this is something that is new, but I didn't really ask them.
Now, there is a cap board of ACO that takes care of these counties. They can't afford this stuff, but this is on top of that.
This is, so this is a state, this is a, so by state statute, it has to be what the equipment blue value, blue book values for. So this cap backhoe is anywhere from ninety to a hundred, ten thousand bucks. It's depending on how many hours and shape and stuff like that is, so that's, uh, that's what we did here, so.
Is this a good deal?
It's a good deal. It's a good deal for everybody. Item eighteen, discussion of possible approval of the declaration of surplus of equipment in accordance with nineteen Oklahoma statutes, three thirty-nine and four twenty-one through four twenty-one point two for District One. And it'd be for the same backhoe. I'll make a motion to approve. Second? Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Item nineteen, discussion of possible approval to reserve the amounts to pay unliquidated, unliquidated encumbrances and outstanding claims for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three. I will make that motion to approve.
What's that?
So who can explain this? A little bit.
Which one is that? I'm sorry, I was just listening.
Item nineteen.
Well, this is on public count?
Yeah, well, there's several of them there.
Aren't you representing for that? Gary?
Yeah.
It's many that they closed out some POs, and the, the money that's left over from that has to go back over to where it's supposed to go, and then, and held, it goes back to general. So if it's, if it's your cash accounts, it goes back into your account. It just rolls over to that, but we have to do it by resolution in order to move it from year to year.
And you made the motion for that?
I made the motion.
Was Zach hardy?
Okay, you seconded it?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
So this has two thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-eight cents of ARPA money, right, coming back into the general? Is that what I'm reading here, man? Mincio's-
I'd have to look at it.
Rule of fire is gun seventeen oh seven. This is the amounts that are rolling back in?
They have to be segregated now?
Pardon me?
They have to be segregated now?
So what it was, it was, it was money from twenty-two, twenty-three, so it's moving back to twenty-four, twenty-five.
So like the county clerks on here for twenty-seven, sixty-eight, sheriff on sixty-four dollars, brand stations, seven, seven, seven eighty-eight, Mincio.
It's all money that's been hanging out there because the POs are still open.
The Mincio, sixteen thousand, eight eighty-eight. Rush Springs, hundred fifty-five, total three thousand, six hundred and twenty-two. Little senior citizens, six, seven thousand, six seventy-five, so. It's just, it's just cleaning things up, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And we had several, um, years still open, and so we finally got those POs closed out, and now the money has to move over to the next year.
What's RM and P? It's, it's under your county clerk account, RM and P, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, five twelve.
I think I got it hit, I think I got it hit, or so. All that was, that paper clipped together until I thought it was all one agenda item, and, uh, so we need to, we still need to vote on.
Okay.
'Cause that's item twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. I didn't catch that. I thought it was all one agenda item. I'm sorry. Um, item twenty, discussion of possible approval to lapse out the unencumbered cash fund balances as of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and move to the new year fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I'll make that motion to approve. Second?
Zach?
Yes.
Or-
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Okay, and one of those, I think the first one is, uh, to reserve that money to pay those encumbrances, so that's what that one was. Um, no, maybe, maybe not.
Is that this one?
Nineteen, yeah, nineteen is to reserve it. That was the health department when he was asking me that. They had to say that. And then the next one is, one he just read, is lapse out, so that means we're moving it from, um, from year to year. 'Cause who was that? That was... What accounts are those? Those are cash accounts. Yes, those are cash accounts, so that money just rolls over to the next, next year. And then if it says, if it says lapse, it's just closing that year and moving it over. If it says, um, reserve, there's, there's POs still open at that. And then anything that says, uh, general on it, it's going back in to general fund. So those accounts, if it's open, then it won't go back into gen, I mean, it won't go back into the account. It'll go back in just to general fund.
All right, item twenty-one, discussion of possible approval to reserve the amounts to pay unliquidated encumbrances and outstanding claims for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four. I'll make that motion to approve.
Second?
Zach?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Gary?
Cheers.
Item twenty-two, discussion of possible approval to lapse out the unencumbered balances as of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four, general fund and health fund. I'll make that motion to approve.
Second?
Zach?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, discussion of possible approval to lapse out the unencumbered cash fund balances as of December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, from the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four, and move to the new fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I'll make that motion to approve.
Second?
Zach?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
All right, item twenty-four, discussion of possible approval to deposit a check from Cleveland County in the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand in Grady County District Three Capital Outlay for the purchase of equipment.
Make that motion to approve.
Second?
Zach?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Can I have a little of it?
No.
Okay. Clear enough?
Why is the people so stingy with money? It's just money.
I'm just gonna leave that all alone.
I'm trying to recover my own.
Yeah, we'll move on quickly. Item twenty-five, discussion of possible approval of utility pipeline, road crossing permits, far line, fast line permits, and driveway tenement permits.
Do we have any?
No.
Kim?
No, I don't have any.
Item twenty-six, discussion of possible approval of blanket purchase orders. I'll make that motion to approve.
Second? On that other one, no action, right?
Yes, no action on it. Item twenty-five.
Zach?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, or yeah, six, item twenty-seven, review purchase orders generated by Grady County governing bodies being current, previous, and authorized are not payment of such purchase orders. What motion?
Gary's gonna read?
Okay.
I got a motion to read here.
Okay, all right.
All right, sheriff, uh, items purchased, not only PO, three hundred and forty dollars and nineteen cents. Stand on.
Sheriff.
Sheriff. Exceeded, blanket purchase orders shouldn't exceed, and that was in the amount of four eighty-three oh six. And there's a letter attached explaining what occurred. I'm gonna read it. Pioneer Fire Station, see attached. The above referenced invoices reflect a blanket PO. I had processed paperwork to close the PO. The PO was changed, dated nine, three, twenty-four, also a blanket purchase order. However noted, purchase order was not closed until nine eleven twenty-four, the amount of a thousand dollars. It was dated eight five twenty-four, and was closed at a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Previous blanket was not closed until after the new blanket was issued. Because of this, those funds remained encumbered during this time. Chickasha welding. It's Pioneer. Polkassett Station.
Are you kidding me?
The very same thing occurred on with the purchase orders on the Polkassett Station. And that amount was, uh, a thousand dollars. Previous blanket was not closed until after the new blanket was issued. Because of this, those funds remained encumbered. So it's the very same thing that's what occurred with that. Verden senior citizens, blanket PO exceeded by sixty-five dollars. And that was on paper. Verden senior citizens. Blanket PO exceeded in the amount of eight ninety-nine thirty-three. And that was a paper issue. It probably occurred, the general passed away, like it's-
It occurred.
They're struggling to get everything.
Yeah.
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 Uh, Highway District Two, exceeded blanket PO, shouldn't exceed, uh, amount thirteen twenty-six forty-nine. Uh, I believe that was perch.
That's warranty work. If they came out three times, warranty doesn't cover mileage, so we had a lot of mileage, yeah.
Yeah. Nanacaw Station. The same situation as the other two, the PO, previous blanket was not closed until after the new blanket was issued. Because of this, those funds remained encumbered during this time period. What? I don't understand why the deal is there. All these stations doing the same thing.
I can't tell you either. I don't know. I don't know if it was just a-
My suggestion would be to take a copy of these and take them to the board meeting and explain it to them with Kim, to those stations. And... 'Cause they've never done it before, but we don't wanna big end books on this. I mean, they, they, the station needs to be aware of what's going on and how this all.
Yeah.
You know, this is my fault, or this may have been the lead. Well, I think if you're the representative, you've got a time to speak there, and you need to bring this up and inform them that.
I think you're right.
Yeah, I usually am.
I'll do that. Uh, Grady County Fire Department.
Please heal my Polkassett people, would you please?
Okay.
Okay.
Proper purchasing procedures were not followed. The invoice was dated before the purchase order. And the amount was fifty-six forty-eight seventy-six. Combed at it. Fuel. I guess that was during the bust of one of those fires that was going on, using. Chickasha senior citizens. Invoice stated before the purchase order, a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Sheriff Harman. Invoice stated before purchase order, a hundred and fifty dollars. Tire, under the ringgo. Public Health, PO not opened when received, amount of forty dollars and four cents. Public Health, PO not opened when received. Amount of five ninety-one ninety-one.
I think the health department's transitioning with someone new as well.
What?
I think the health department's transitioning with someone new too.
Sure.
So things are getting revised, which is.
This is for, uh.
Learning processes.
Okay, electric bill. Okay, another Public Health invoice stated before, before the PO, amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. At least one spark.
That one already.
Yeah.
No, 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 I've got the fire department right there.
Okay.
Call my motion to approve.
Second.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Gary, this pool's all timed out. Spring, or? They timed out, timed out for Gary's sitting.
Same as you.
Did you sign that? You didn't sign that board, did you?
No, I didn't sign it.
I signed it first time. Okay.
Go ahead and read the next item, item twenty-eight, discussion of possible approval of county officer monthly reports, and there is none. Item twenty-nine, discussion of possible approval of estimate of needs, request for appropriations, and transfer of appropriations. I'll make that motion to approve, second.
Zach?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes. Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Would you, come here, please? You just want the top copy?
Yeah.
Okay, I can carry a copy of those.
Uh, and one copy of one of the letters, because they're all just like.
Yeah. All right, Gary, your turn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Zach?
Yes.
Kirk?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.